Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning and the planners assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at an executive meeting in March. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guideline. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present the request. There will be allotted fifteen minutes. Then persons in favor, in opposition, or with concern will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate to which to speak, click the raised hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of the speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear, allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor, in opposition, and with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. Purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, PC 03-22, Adam and Michelle Droge. Did I say that correctly?
Good evening. PC 03-22, Adam and Michelle Droge, is a request for a change in zoning from C2 to R6 for a 0.26 acre tract of land on the southeast side of South Broadway, approximately eighty-five feet northeast of Mann Street and on the, and the north side of Mann Street. As you can see from the county context map, this site is in South County, close to the county line with St. Louis City. And there you can see the site outlined on the aerial in red. From the land use map, you can see that a significant portion of the surrounding land is developed with single-family homes in the R5 Residence District. Directly across South Broadway from the petition site is school administrative offices and an early childhood center in the Hancock Place School District. And there are various auto-related, mainly auto-related developments along South Broadway in the area, as well as an MSD plant to the east of the petition site. And here on this aerial, you can see a little bit more of the surrounding land uses. This is looking east at the site from across, from across South Broadway. Here we are looking north up South Broadway. And this is looking south down South Broadway. This is looking southwest across South Broadway at the intersection with Vincent Avenue. This is looking east directly into the site where you can see the public hearing sign. This is also looking east at one of the existing structures on the site. This is looking east at the existing home on the site. It's behind the fence that you saw in the previous picture. This is looking west at the back of the house that's on the site. This is looking south. This is the portion of the site that is on Mann Street. Here we are looking east down Mann Street. This is looking west up Mann Street towards South Broadway. And this is looking south at the intersection of Mann Street and South Broadway. And now I believe the petitioner has a presentation.
Okay.
Adam, I'm going to make you the presenter. You'll need to click Share and then click on whatever application you have the presentation in. And while you're doing that, just for the Commission, you may have recognized that site. It was the subject of a request last year, which died at the council level. Since then, the petitioner's been in contact with the, with the Councilman's office. And that, that's why they're remaking the request now. But this is the subject of, of the same request last year.
Yep, thanks a lot, Mel. Appreciate it. So, hey, everybody, I'll jump right in here. So, yeah, as Mel mentioned, we got this property about a year ago. We came immediately for a zoning request and it kind of just died as it was being voted on. It wasn't really approved, or I guess it wasn't really unapproved either one. It just kind of died. And so I've been consistently reaching out to people ever since, trying to, you know, get this back on the board and get the request. And really, what you have is you have a house, right, on the main part, which you showed a picture of all the angles of the house. It's clearly a house that people have been living in it for, we did a record since about nineteen forty, the house has been a primary residence to somebody. And so, but it's zoned commercial. And so when I bought the house, I thought that, you know, when we were looking at it, I thought it was zoned half-commercial, half-residential, if that's even a thing, right? And so my understanding was that I could rent the house out to a family, like it's been the whole time, and that I would just be able to rent the front little office space that you saw on the other picture. It's just like an office for like, you know, one or two people, right? And I thought I could go through the quick zoning request when I bought it. Turns out, that is not been the case at all. It's been about a year and it's just been kind of running through it. And so here we are again. So I'll run through this with you guys, kind of the information that we got here. So what we're looking to do is allow for rezoning for non-conforming use. I want to use it as a residential property for family or under. And you can see, the picture of the house is right here. Supporting evidence, so we're going to go to the property layout and features, the surrounding area and public benefit, and then the history of use. So, not only do the prior owners reside in the rear building for many years, but the home is designed in a manner to which is suitable for residency. You can see a lot of the pictures there. There's beautiful bathrooms. There's, this is a, I mean, this is a gorgeous little house in, in this LeMay area. It's got this beautiful woodwork throughout the house. The guy that lived there just did the nicest finishes. These bathrooms are beautiful. It's got three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms. It's got main floor laundry. It does have a lower level apartment on the back. It has two kitchens and one kitchenette. It's got a large living room, which you can see here on the bottom left corner. It's got lofted bedroom. It's got a patio and a deck. It's got full-size closets in each rooms. It's got full-size egress windows to escape from, in case of a fire. And it's got substantial parking for tenants or residents. There's a large lot right beside the house that is where the previous owners parked at, and it's plenty of parking. They had other vehicles parked there and stuff. So the surrounding area and benefits, so changing the use of the property will allow it to conform with use of surrounding properties. Seventeen of the twenty-three nearest properties are single families or apartments. The property is close to a local school and could benefit a family. Allowing residents to live in this, in the rear and run a small business in the front would be the ideal use of the lot, though there could be other options, but that would be an ideal use. Then conforming to similar use as the surrounding properties would lead to a better property value. Allowing to, allowing the non-conforming use will prevent the property from sitting vacant. So that's, I guess, one of the biggest issues so far is this, you know, beautiful house has just been sitting here vacant for about a year now. I haven't been able to rent it. Not really sure what direction to go with it. I've been very flexible in what I'm willing to do. I, I just can't really seem to get an answer on it. And I really just, you guys know that, you know, vacant properties bring its own set of problems, right? Break-ins, you know, people breaking in and just living there. You know, not to, you know, we've, we've since winterized the property, but you know, you just have a whole set of liability with a property just sitting there vacant like this from, from animals and things like that. And then the property's just decaying, you know, with nobody keeping an eye on it every day. And so there's a lot of liability with it just sitting there rotting and not being able to be used. And then as far as the history of its use, we did a lot of research and we sent all these records to Mel. It's kind of overwhelming how much data that we got on this property. But from the best that we could find from eighteen eighty to nineteen twenty-two is used as a primary residence for a winemaker. So in the basement, there's, it's kind of interesting, actually. It goes down to the basement, and then there's actually another basement in the basement where it was like a big wine cellar down there. It's actually really cool. So he uses as primary residence and he made wine there. Nineteen forty-nine was first records of a separate front building used for commercial space, that little small building in the front. And then nineteen forty to present, the home was used as a primary residence. So our goal's at a glance, what we're trying to do with this is change the use of the property so we can get an occupancy permit for the property. We'll then go on to find a suitable tenant and then maintain and manage the property. So a little bit about our company. So we manage, we do property management all across St. Louis. We have a great track record of finding long-term, good-paying tenants with no evictions on record for our own rental properties. So my wife and I have our own rental portfolio. It's, it's fairly small, but we do manage quite a few properties. We manage about three hundred and fifteen properties in the St. Louis area. And so, you know, we have a pretty good track record of, of working with tenants and, and placing good tenants in these properties. So that's what I got. I also have, I'm going to share this to, while, while we have it here, one second. Let's see here. Let's see here, I'm having trouble finding it. Okay. Okay, can you guys see this letter that I'm sharing?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a letter from St. Louis County Council, Six District, Ernie Trakus. He said, Dear Mr. Draghi, after carefully reviewing the Planning Department's recommendation on formally filed PC 0821, I am agreeable with the Planning Department's recommendation for the property to be rezoned, R6, 5,000 square foot Residence District, allowing for one multifamily residence and an additional residence for the small studio apartment along with paving requirements. The LeMay Comprehensive Study outlines this area as having single-family homes with mixed multifamily dwellings. This particular area has an increased amount of existing multifamily dwellings, and as such, rezoning for additional multifamily and rentals require deeper inspection and reflection to the question on behalf of my constituents in the area. Please let me know if you have any further questions. So Ernie sent that over not too long ago. And so that's kind of what I have. I guess the last thing I'll add on this, since I guess I just get this one time to speak, is that I really, really strongly request that we can come to a decision on this time. And, and, and I've been as pay, I've been very patient with this process, right? I've been sitting on this property a year and it's been sitting vacant. I just don't know what else to do. And I've reached out to people begging them, saying, please give me an answer. What do I do? I just want to get somebody in this property. And I've been begging people for a year now and I can't seem to get an answer. So I'd really, please request that we can come to an answer on it this time. And if I can provide any other information, we're happy to do it. We've exhausted pretty much any angle or resource that we have to get this pushed through. And I just don't know what else to do to get this property pushed through. And, and, and if I sound, I guess, maybe a slightly frustrated, I guess, is because that I can't refinance this property until I get it rezoned and get a tenant in there. And so it's costing me a lot, not that it's your guys' problem, I understand that, but it's costing me a lot of money every month. And, and I'm willing to do whatever I need to do. I really am. I just, it's just been, it's been quite a long, somewhat frustrating battle that I've had here. So that's pretty much all I have for you guys. I appreciate you, you're listening and taking the time.
Okay, appreciate it. Commissioners, questions? Anyone?
No, no, wait, wait, this is Keith, but we had already approved it before and it went through the County Council and set, and set. Is that right?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, the, the Planning Commission did put this through. And ultimately, as we, we said in the opening remark, that's, the County Council has the final say on this. So all we can do is take it from there. So if you have any questions? Seeing none, Mel, you want to take over and see if anyone would like to speak?
If you would like to speak, ask a question or make a comment regarding this request, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list. The button may also be in the bottom right-hand most portion of your screen, but it should look like a little hand next to your name on the list. Okay, we have Dan Carver. Dan, you are unmuted to give your comments.
All right, thank you. I own five properties and got five postcards near this property. I can tell you, I own the house next door to this at ninety-four thirty-six South Broadway. The gentleman that lived in the house did most of this work, if not all of it, I believe, without permits. The back unit that is considered an, an extra unit on the house was never approved to be a multi-unit. It was a house that he lived in the back and a commercial property in the front. The commercial property has been unused for over ten years because the MODOT put in a traffic guard rail right in front. So there's no parking for that little front building. And the rest of us in the neighborhood, I've talked to neighbors, we don't want it zoned R6. If he wants to rent the house as a single family, like all the other houses around there, we're fine with that. But the multifamily for four-plus units does not fit with what we want for our neighborhood.
Okay, we thank you.
I don't see any other speakers at this time.
Okay. Petitioner, you have any rebuttal to that?
Yes. So if it were to be rezoned, I would, of course, go through all proper occupancy inspections. I would go through all proper permitting. If the back unit was not permitted properly, I would either pass permits for it, or I just would not rent the back unit out. It would be very clear as that. The house is my main goal right now, to rent the house out. And that's my number one goal. And then as far as the parking goes, there is parking on the left side of the house, and then there's parking on the right side of the house. And then there's a pathway on the parking on the right side that leads right to the commercial space. There's a sidewalk that leads right up to the commercial space right there. And so the house in the front commercial building would be my number one objectives. If I, if I can rent the back unit out by going through the permitting process, I will. If I cannot, then I will not rent it out. Obviously, if I was going to do something sketchy or illegal, I would have already done it at this point, not waited a whole year and let the house sit vacant. So I'll follow all guidelines of, you know, LeMay District and, and St. Louis County.
Okay, we thank you. Commissioners, you have any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. And this concludes this, this hearing. And we'll go on to PC 04-22, Verizon Wireless.
PC 04-22, Verizon Wireless, is a request for a conditional use permit in the NU for a 0.06 acre tract of land on the west side of Antire Road and approximately eight hundred feet north of the St. Louis County line. As you can see from the county context map, this site is in very far South County. As I said, it's eight hundred, about eight hundred feet north of the St. Louis County line. And there you can see the site outlined in red, as well as the smaller outline of the area of the petition. From the land use map, you can see that the surrounding land uses include Antire Valley County Park and the Beaumont Boy Scout Camp, as well as a Bussin Quarry to the west. And then to the south is Jefferson County, which is mostly wooded in this area with one single-family home development. And again, here's an aerial of the site. This smaller rectangle is the petitioned area. This is looking west in the site at the public hearing sign. This is looking north up Antire Road. This is looking south down Antire Road. Here we are looking southwest into the site. This is looking southwest at the site. Looking south, this is the general area where the proposed tower would go. And this is looking south at the rear of the site. The site currently has a stable and some horses. This is looking south again at the rear property line of the site. You can see some of the abutting residences. Here we are. We've now crossed the county line, looking north into the site from that residential subdivision. And looking south at the residential subdivision in Jefferson County. And now the petitioner has a presentation.
Okay, petitioner?
So Paul, I've made you the presenter. So now you can click Share and then the application you have your presentation in. And it's coming up now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Okay, you can see the, the presentation?
Yeah, if you just want to make it full, full screen.
Yeah, I will when I, in just a moment. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Paul Saleo with business address of fifty-five eleven West Seventy-Ninth Street, Indianapolis, Indiana. I am a site acquisition consultant with Fortune Wireless and am here on behalf of Verizon Wireless, who are requesting the recommendation for approval of a conditional use permit for a new wireless telecommunications tower in southwestern St. Louis County, just to south of Highway forty-four. I'm sure you've all seen your fair share of towers come through the Commission, but I wanted to go briefly over what we at Fortune Wireless do that gets us to this point. Initially, we get a search ring from our client, who is looking to enhance and expand their coverage in a particular area. We do our due diligence, which includes going on online databases, like the FCC. We look at aerial maps to see what the terrain cover looks like, what sort of structures may be in the area. I understand, you know, I under, we understand that typically jurisdictions prefer colocation and also carriers actually do as well. So we look for things like buildings, water tanks, other towers in the area. Then we'll go out and we'll drive the area and we'll do more due diligence. We'll look at the terrain. We'll see if there's any structures or any elevation issues that may obstruct the area to kind of get an idea of where a tower might go. And it's because if there's not a colocation area, then we would look for suitable land for a new site. And then we'll work with the jurisdiction, with planning staff, to understand the requirements needed, and then find possible sites that would work for both the jurisdiction and for the client. And then we would go into approaching landowners and finding interested partners who would be interested in, you know, going into an agreement with the client and then look at the right spot in their land that would meet, you know, the jurisdictional requirements. And then we work with the landowner on the agreement. So that kind of gets us where we are tonight. And so the location presented tonight, it meets the landowner's interest. It meets Verizon's interest. But most importantly for tonight, it meets the St. Louis County's code for regulation of telecommunications towers. So as you can see here, you know, you see our site name. The address is thirteen fifty-one Antire Road. And once again, my name is Paul Saleo. This kind of gives you a brief table of contents of what we're going through tonight. We have also submitted a letter of intent with our application that kind of goes into much more detail and documentation about how we meet St. Louis County's code, but this presentation will, will give you the highlights. So Verizon Wireless Network in St. Louis County. Of course Verizon has a vast presence in St. Louis County and is always looking for ways that they can improve their network for St. Louis County's residents, as well as visitors to the area. You see Verizon's commitment to St. Louis County in this particular area. They're looking to enhance their coverage and their capacity in the surrounding area and along the highly traveled I forty-four corridor. They're looking to bridge the gap in coverage along this corridor for St. Louis County's residents and visitors. This area of Highway forty-four kind of winds around a lot of elevation and terrain changes, and it's very hard to keep consistent cell coverage as they move, you move down the highway. So this site is, is looking to also bridge a gap in coverage. And then obviously, we're looking to ensure adequate infrastructure for the emergency services in the area, which is of course important along the highway as well. So why is this tower needed? There are no elevated structures in the area, such as buildings or water tanks or other towers that would meet the elevation and terrain needs for, to bridge that coverage along I forty-four. The nearest wireless facility is over fifteen hundred feet away and does not meet the structural or the elevation needs. And this will also help eliminate need for additional towers in the area as the tower is designed to, you know, to accommodate collocators. So there are some of these maps are kind of duplicates of what we've already seen, but you know, I see this is the tax map and it shows our parcel lines. And as, you know, was shown by staff, there is currently a ranch there and that is the owner. This shows our FEMA flood map. You can see the star where the proposed location is about, and we're not in any special flood zones. This shows a zoning map. Our site here, a parcel, is zoned NU. And then you see NU to the west, NU to the east, and the PS District to the north. And then to the south, you can see Jefferson County. Okay, so St. Louis County's code for telecommunications towers. Chapter one zero zero three point one five seven B addresses the requirements for telecommunications towers in St. Louis County's code. The proposed tower here meets or exceeds all requirements of this chapter, as proven in the letter of intent, for a new wireless tower site. Towers up to two hundred feet are permitted in NU districts. The proposed site meets the fifty-foot setback from the Antire Road right of way. The proposed site meets the hotter tower setback requirement from the PS zone parcel to the north. And there are no wireless facilities within fifteen hundred feet of the proposed site. Here you can see an aerial map shows the nearest wireless facility, which is outside of that fifteen hundred foot, and is also a, a small wooden pole that is kind of nestled in those trees right there. And there is real note, really no room for a colocation because their collocated antennas would be required to be inside the tree line, which is of course would obscure and obstruct any, you know, the ability to cover on the Highway forty-four. And there's, we have some site photos as well. Obviously, these were taken during a different time of year than staff's photos. But as you see here, this is us looking north. Obviously during the spring and summer, the, the tree cover is heavy along these parcels. Obviously during the spring and summer, the the tree cover is heavy along these parcel lines. It shows the current access that is on this parcel and our access would kind of come south, coming toward the camera off of the existing access. This is looking south. Once again, there's tree cover over there on the parcel line going on to Antire Road as well as, you know, the the trees, the elevation across Antire Road. And then you see more trees to the south. This is looking east, once more trees on the parcel lines, a lot of heavy tree coverage on the hill across Antire Road. And this is looking west, you know, more trees on the parcel line. Here is our aerial site plan. You can see Antire Road. There you see the access coming off of Antire Road that's existing. And then our access would come off of existing that is already on the parcel. We come south to the tower site as you can see there. Here is a drawings with the setbacks. As you can see on these, we meet the height of the tower requirement to the parcel line to the northwest there, the PS parcel. We are at least, you know, further away than the height of the tower. And then also the setbacks that go to the Antire Road right of way. Our tower is actually seventy-five feet, but the compound is fifty foot, which is the, so we meet that setback as well. Here's an enlarged site plan showing the, the the drive coming down and we have our parking space there that is denoted as required by Saint Louis County code. You can also see around the, around the site, the screening. There will be an eight-foot wooden fence that goes around the site as well as evergreen coverage that is screening around the site per Saint Louis County's regulations. And here is a little bit more detailed landscape plan. You can, once again, you can see the wooden fence. You can see the the trees that will be going around the site. And then there's some more detail over there on the right side of the slide showing the kind of tree and things like that. All this is more detailed in the construction drawings that we've also submitted. Here is a tower elevation drawing that gives you an idea of what the tower will look like. It will be a monopole. Up at the top there, you see Verizon's antennas at a hundred and ninety feet. And then there was a five-foot lightning rod. So there'll be a hundred and ninety-five feet to the top of the lightning rod, which is below the two hundred foot allowance for an NU district. And then you also see two possible future rad centers for future antennas for colocation. And also we have provided some photo simulations here. That's kind of giving you an idea of the aesthetic and what the tower would look like, especially looking at it from Highway forty-four. This gives you an aerial map with the photo sim locations where you will be looking at the site from. I would point out the green areas there on the map, which is from on, next to Highway forty-four. Those areas are actually heavily obscured with trees and elevation. So it actually is, you cannot see the tower in the simulations from those positions. So you can see we chose areas where you would be able to see across that northern parcel from Highway forty-four. And then also a location on the Antire Road. So here is our first location, looking east at the proposed site from Highway forty-four. And then you there, you see the tower in the distance on, on the horizon, which if you're looking at it from the highway on the eye line, is actually much smaller than the existing utility pole, the existing light pole there. Here's another location too, looking southeast at the proposed site. And there's a tower in the distance, once again, smaller in the eye line than the utility pole that is there. Here is location three, looking southwest at the proposed site. And then there's the tower on the horizon there as you're kind of coming around that elevated hill with trees. And then this is location four, looking north at the proposed site. For on Antire Road, this is about the county line. And then there you can see the the tower kind of barely on the other side of that utility pole. Here is the tower determination from the FCC's website. The structure does not require registration because there are no airports within five miles of the coordinates. And this goes into a little more detail of the FAA summary here. But I'll point out the most important part there on the left, the notice criteria. They all say NNR, which is notice is not required. And then on the bottom part of the middle part of the slide, actually shows the nearest airport is over sixty-three thousand feet away, which would be Spirit of Saint Louis. All right. And so in conclusion, we meet or we exceed the requirements set forth in chapter one zero zero three point one five seven B of Saint Louis County's code that regulates telecommunications towers. And so we respectfully request this commission's recommendation of approval for this new telecommunications site. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Questions, commissioners? Anyone?
Yeah, Wayne, I've got a question.
Go ahead, Keith.
You know, when they were talking about the existing cellphone tower that was fifteen hundred feet away and that going up the hill. So it, when they're saying that it, they don't have enough elevation right there. I guess it's just they need another tower in the other, in that area. Because going up Antire Road or up forty-four, there's a cellphone tower that sits up on the hill right there.
That's the one that's cloaked like a pine tree, I believe.
Yeah, so that is that other tower that is over a hundred, fifteen hundred feet away. It's actually about eighteen hundred feet away. It is actually a wooden pole that is nestled in that, in those trees. And so the antenna has actually just come out over the top of that tree line. So there's really no space, not only engineering wise on that tower because of the design of it, but also the antenna array would be below the tree line, which would be obscured, the antennas to try to get onto Highway forty-four. Also from where it's at, you know, like I said, Highway forty-four kind of winds around a lot in that particular area. So to meet the coverage needs and the capacity needs for Verizon here, to get around over some of those hills and cover Highway forty-four is why this, this tower site at this proposed location would be extremely beneficial and would be able to help them meet those needs.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question. How close at proximity are you to the blasting operation at the quarry? And is this going to impact it at all?
Um, I, the, to the quarry is, it's, you know, multiple thousands of feet over to where the blasting, the quarry. And this should not impact the tower in any way, shape or form, you know, as far away as it's going to be.
What about the Phillips Petroleum line, the new line they just put in?
That should also not impede or impact this tower location. You know, the tower is going to be, I just said this one specific spot, they'll only be doing what they need to in that one little specific spot. And any of the industry around the tower should not cause any major impact on where this tower site would be.
Okay, the only dead spot I noticed going through there is about halfway down Antire Hill. And until you get to Lewis Road, it's very minimal of a dead zone. Other than that, the coverage is fine in there.
I, I mean, I can speak for myself personally. I use Verizon and when I go down the highway, I definitely have dead spots. But, you know, whenever Verizon or any carrier looks to build a new site out, you know, building a new site isn't a major time and money investment to do. And so, you know, they have a massive amounts of internal data showing, you know, everybody's calls, where they get dropped, what their coverage looks like, you know, and those kind of things. So whenever they decide to give, to give us, you know, Fortune Wireless or any, you know, anyone like what we do, a new ring or a new search area, you know, they don't do it lightly because these are, you know, multiple, you know, month to year processes to even get a tower built. And then you're looking at, you know, the agreements that you're in and everything like that. So there, there's a lot of time investment that goes into these towers. And so they don't just, you know, put them up wherever they, you know, just willy-nilly, I guess.
Wayne, I have a question. Making a simple statement from my own personal experience, traveling that daily for twenty-five years. And I have been using Verizon and AT&amp;T both, and the coverage is about the same. Anyway, that's all I had. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you, Keith. I mean, Gary. Anyone else?
Yes, I have a question, Wayne. This is Bill.
Yep, Bill.
How many, are you planning on allowing any other carriers to co-locate on there on your site?
Oh, well, at the particular time, at the current moment, there are, you know, there are no co-locators, you know, ready to go. Kind of the way that whenever people co-locate on towers, you know, like I said, when I was speaking at the beginning, you know, we typically look for towers to co-locate once we get that project. So yes, the tower is engineered to hold at least two co-locators as required by the FCC. You know, but when they build the tower, it'll only be Verizon's antennas on it. But it would be an attractive location for colocation by other carriers in the future.
So as you said, you would not have any interference for those guys?
Uh, no, because it would be on the same tower. You know, they all, colocation on, on towers is preferred by carriers as well. So they, they all have master agreements with each other and with other tower companies. And so colocating, you know, all the time, they design and they engineer their antenna arrays around to make sure there is no obstruction or any interference and things like that.
Yeah, I understand the co-location, but I was wondering about the same length or would yours be higher than theirs? Or would they be on the same plateau?
Uh, no, they, they would be on different levels. As, as I showed in the tower elevation drawing, Verizon's antennas would be at the top and then anyone would come, you know, right below or right below. And all the carriers also have their own licenses and frequencies and things like that. So that also helps. You know, they all have, they all have specific FCC licenses. That also keeps them from interfering with each other as they, you know, do their work.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none. Mel, you want to? See if anyone would like to speak?
Yes, we do have some speakers, but I'll remind everyone, if you do want to speak, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list or it may be at the bottom right-hand corner of your screen. We'll start with Brandon Dury. My apologies if I pronounced your name wrong. Brandon, you are unmuted to give your comment.
All right, I've got a few things I'd like to discuss. First of all, he's, he's overselling the cover, the wooded coverage. It is simply a fence line with honeysuckle that is in between Antire Road and this field that they're talking about. The tree line along the creek to the west is barren in the, in the winter time and fall and until spring starts to bloom. So they took some pictures, of course, that would cover what they're trying to sell here. But the majority, half of the year, everything is completely exposed. So you're looking at a hundred and ninety-foot tall tower that is clearly visible from a long way away. There is a water tower. He said there was no water structures or anything within the area. We have a small water tank that is just within a thousand feet of it, probably eight hundred feet, just down the Antire Road. So I know he can say that there may not be a tall water tower somewhere, but there is water towers there. And there's also a water tower, right, that feeds the Boy Scout camp directly across the road, just on the other side of the hill. Two hundred feet tall is the obstruction that he's trying to create here to send a signal. So from Antire Road to Eureka is roughly five miles, probably six, and it's four miles to the one forty-one exit. So they're considering constructing a two-hundred-foot tall cell tower to accommodate cell service for that nine-mile stretch that has, I mean, I've been driving this highway and this stretch of road for decades. Very little to interference as far as phone drops or call drops or anything like that. So I don't know where all that comes to, just to buy all of this. That's about all I have to say about that, but he's definitely overselling the greenery in the area. As a matter of fact, the, the reason a lot of people live down here is it's quiet and secluded. There's not a lot of anything being built around here. There are cell towers right there at the Boy Scout camp that he's talking about. There's also one right inside Lone Oak Park, just two miles down the road up on the hill. So to build in this valley doesn't really make sense. If he's trying to get the height, why wouldn't he build it up on the hill somewhere else?
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the comments.
Okay, and when you're finished with your comment, if you could click the raise hand button again to lower your hand back down. Next will be Karen Dury. Karen, you are unmuted to give your, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Okay, thank you. I'm also a resident at the neighborhood that is directly beside this property where they want to put this tower. And one of the biggest issues here is that we're in Jefferson County. This is on the county line. So they're proposing to put this in Saint Louis County to help Saint Louis County residents as they travel up and down the highway. And yet there is a residential subdivision right next to this property. The Saint Louis County landowner that owns this property does not reside at that property. So they are not having any kind of effect except for probably a financial gain from this. You know, we kind of talked about why this was required whenever it's such a small area they're trying to service. And it's been mentioned that the reason they want to put this up is to help those that are driving through forty-four in that small little stretch. There are those couple of towers that are already across the street at the Boy Scout camp. And if it is to help the people on the highway, why can't it go closer to the highway? There's the quarry right there. There's the Saint Louis County ATV park right there. There's the gun range that's right there. If this is a tower that's meant to help the highway travelers, put it next to the highway. It's going to be right outside our subdivision. And, you know, there's surveys from the National Association of Realtors that show that there's an overwhelming amount of home buyers that pay less or even walk away from homes and properties that are located near a cell tower. And like Brandon mentioned, we chose this location, many of our neighbors chose this location because it's rural. We have woods on all sides of us except for that property right next door. And I can sit on my deck right now, overlook my backyard, overlook woods. And now I'm going to be sitting on my deck staring at a cell tower hovering over all the trees. So not only that, but with a lot of people that we've talked to in our subdivision that have signed a petition stating the same, we're very concerned about the health issues that come with living nearby a cell tower. There's numerous studies that show that you're going to get harmed from living near one. It could be minor. I'll say this sarcastically, things like depression, fatigue, dizziness, sleep problems. It can be major like cancer. There was a study done last year in Spain that said they just studied residents living in a neighborhood that had cell prob, cell towers in it, and they've had ten times more cases of cancer than that of the total Spanish population. I'm sure he can give you, the petitioner can give you studies showing the opposite, but the problem is that the science is not studied, settled whenever it comes to this issue. And my family and our neighbors don't need to be the guinea pigs for it. We know that the cell towers emit the EMF radiation and we're going to be constantly exposed to this because we're going to be within a couple hundred yards of this cell tower. It's it's just, it's a big concern for us. There are cities like Palm Beach, Florida and LA that have banned cell towers from being near schools. There's the International Association of Firefighters that oppose cell towers from being, cell towers being placed on their buildings. And why do they do this? Because they know it has a good chance of causing harm to the kids that are in the school buildings or the firefighters that live and work there. So we're asking that you please reconsider the location for this cell tower so that it's right not, so that it's not right next to our neighborhood of eighty homes when it could go hundreds of yards closer to the highway where it is meant to have an impact. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next will be Joe Perkins. Joey, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Um, yes, I would like to say good evening and I do welcome Brandon and Karen's comments. I think they both touched on very major issues and I'm going to bring up or ask Paul, the Verizon presenter, the question of the Pittsfield, Massachusetts Board of Health Issues Conditional Cease and Assist Order to a Verizon cell tower. Is this the same or similar type of cell tower that was in the Pittsfield, Massachusetts area that was revoked or Cease and Assist Order due to the health concerns that Karen had just mentioned? due to the health concerns that Karen had just mentioned?
Well, he can answer that on rebuttal.
Okay, that's basically, uh, I think the people ahead of me said a lot of what, what I was going to say, no need to continue the same information. But, um, yeah, we also are asking you guys to reconsider the, uh, site of this tower and put it closer to the highway since that seems to be the, the main push for that, like Brandon said, that nine mile stretch of highway. So I don't, that's all I have.
Okay, Joe, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, next will be Frank McNack. Frank, you are unmuted to give your comments. Frank, are you there? Mr. McNack is unmuted, but I do not hear him. But that is the last speaker for this petition.
Okay, um, petitioner, would you like to offer rebuttal?
Yeah, I can respond to, um, some of the points. Um, as far as other structures in the area, um, you know, there's, um, some of the, um, comments were about the, uh, water tanks or other towers. Um, like I said, we, you know, we get a very specific, um, kind of search area that to enhance the, uh, coverage area, uh, that they're looking to do and bridging, you know, the gap in coverage and all those kind of things. Um, you know, we looked at all of these other ones as far as water tanks and in the tower to the northeast and things like that. Um, and they just, they're just, they wouldn't work, um, for elevation, for the kind of, um, coverage that was needed there. Um, Verizon itself was actually on, uh, one of the towers that was mentioned up to the northeast down Highway forty-four. But as I said about Highway forty-four and the way that it winds, um, and elevation changes and terrain, um, you know, the way that a lot, the way that towers are designed is that they kind of offload people onto each other as they're moving and things like that. And, you know, and into capacity and, uh, coverage, things like that. And with, and so that's kind of, this tower, um, you know, is needed to do that down this area. And it's not just down the highway, it's, it's the surrounding area, you know, it's down into Jefferson County. Um, you know, I know that there's some concern, but the benefits for this tower down there as well, um, for coverage, um, and capacity, not only for Verizon, but whatever, um, you know, co-location or, um, may, you know, down the road from other carriers. Um, as far as the tree cover goes, um, yeah, the trees, obviously there are a lot, plenty of trees that lose their leaves around the area. But, you know, they're still, even without the leaves, uh, the trees cause a lot of obstruction, um, just due to the proximity of how close all the trees are together, uh, not only for, um, you know, cell, cell coverage, but also for, um, you know, obscuring and screening, um, the actual site. Uh, we looked at other property owners that are closer to the highway as well. Um, you know, the issues are, is it's not as easy as just putting up a tower. You have to, you know, you have to abide by the jurisdictional requirements. Uh, you also have to, you know, be able to actually build or have access. A lot of these properties right here don't have access because of their tree cover or their terrain. Uh, you can't build there because of the, uh, the way that the terrain is, things like that. And also, you know, Salos County specifically has, uh, their issue with, um, the scenic corridor. And so that's another thing too, is we've talked, we've been working with the planning commission, um, on this site. And we've had a meeting with the planning, uh, planning staff, um, you know, and that was kind of part of what we were trying to do is to, you know, do what we could to not cause issues down the scenic corridor, um, down the Highway forty-four. And, um, and that was another, uh, concern. I see that, um, should I continue? I see somebody, um, had a, one of the commissioners had a, wanted to say something. I thought I saw a hand.
Yeah, I had a question on, um, the one, um, resident specifically said there was a water tank and you never did address if there is or is not a water tank.
Um, I, when this, the search was done for the site, uh, we looked at all the structures around the area. Like I said, you know, it's, it's easy to, we can just look and say, well, that's, there's a water tank, even if it's, you know, thousands of feet away or wherever. But like, like I was mentioning earlier, is, you know, terrain and elevation. And there's a lot of things that go into, you know, a suitable location. Um, and so, you know, when we did our initial search, any of the structures that were close by, uh, just wouldn't work for the kind of, um, coverage that in, you know, capacity needs of Verizon needed to be able to.
No, 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 let me stop you there. You keep saying wouldn't work. I'm asking you specifically, did you notice a water tank in the area? You previously said there wasn't a water tank. The resident said there was, now you're saying, well, that won't work. I mean, what do you?
When I, when I mentioned, or no, when I mentioned there were no water tanks, I meant no water tanks in the search area that would be able to, you know, provide what we needed in the specific search area. And I would have to go back and look at the actual, you know, search ring that we got, um, to see, you know, but like I said, there were no structures within the ring that would work for what Verizon needed in this particular area to maintain, you know, their licensed coverage. Um, would you allow me to continue with what I was going to say about, um, responding to other, um, comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, well, as far as, you know, I know someone wants to mention property values. Um, and there actually are studies out there to show that, uh, property values are not, you know, hindered by, you know, cell towers. So, you know, property values are, you know, are influenced by things like the economy and things like that. People, you know, whenever they buy a property, you know, one of the first things you can add, you know, you can, you know, look at studies also by Realtors. One of the first things they look at is cell coverage, especially nowadays, you know, over fifty-seven percent of, um, of people don't even have landlines anymore. So they, they require, you know, good cell coverage in their houses or their apartments or things like that to be able to, you know, just talk on the phone, but not to mention emergency services and stuff like that. And also, you know, like I said, uh, this would benefit Jefferson County, um, as well as providing that coverage. Um, as far as the health issues are concerned, um, you know, I would respectfully, you know, and the, uh, county attorney can also confirm this, but, um, you know, President Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, um, a determination cannot be not made by a jurisdiction uh, because of, uh, potential health issues. Uh, but I am happy to respond a little bit, um, to that and just say that, you know, the federal guidelines, um, you know, they set a minimum level for, uh, you know, emissions. And, you know, cell, uh, cell towers actually operate as fractions of what the minimum requirements are for the, for the federal government. And so, you know, things like laptop computers, wireless, or, um, you know, uh, Wi-Fi, uh, you know, cell towers operate much, much lower than what even the minimum requirements are set by federal guidelines. And there are numerous studies, you can go to their websites and I can provide this for the commission if needed, um, the American Cancer Society, the World Health Organization, the CDC, uh, they all show, um, you know, studies and information on their websites about cell towers and about, you know, that there is no potential, you know, health effects. Um, so that was the comments that I had to, to, uh, comments that we received.
Wayne, Mr. McNack has written his comment into the chat. If you'd like me to read it?
Go ahead, please.
He said, uh, he wanted to add to the information mentioned earlier. There have been two studies performed in Connecticut and Pennsylvania where they polled people. Seventy-nine percent advised they would under no circumstantious circumstances purchase or rent a home near a cell tower. Direction of a cell tower would reduce the overall value of eighty homes in the entire subdivision by about three point two million. And then he has a couple of links to an article, which I can include in the, the public comment packet for this whole petition.
Okay, thank you. Petitioners, have anything else?
Um, I, that is all I had.
Okay, commissioners, anything? Seeing them, this concludes this hearing. And we will go on to PC oh-five dash twenty-two, Melville School District R nine.
Uh, good evening commissioners, uh, before you use PC oh-five dash twenty-two, uh, Melville School District R nine, uh, which is a request for amended C eight, uh, for a four point zero-three acre tract located on, on the southeast side of Lima Ferry Road, um, approximately five hundred and forty-seven feet east of Will Avenue. Uh, you can see from the, the county context map, um, this, uh, parcel is located in, in South County. And the aerial shows the parcel outlined in red. And if you can notice, uh, Melville High School is just to the south. It's also on the land use map. We can, you can see Melville High School to the south there. Um, fronting on Lima Ferry is, is primarily, uh, multifamily or, uh, commercial uses. Um, beyond that is, uh, single family. And then, uh, to the south and, and east, um, of the subject site is primarily a single family as well. Uh, and this aerial view is just a, a closer look. You can see the parcel outlined in red. Uh, this view is, um, looking southeast into the parcel from Lima Ferry Road. You can, uh, see the public hearing sign. And this view would be sort of staying put, but just, uh, turning a little bit, looking northeast along Lima Ferry. Uh, and then this view is looking north across Lima Ferry Road, uh, at some of the, the multifamily development across the street. And then this view would be looking northwest, um, at the same multifamily development. Uh, and this view is looking west along Lima Ferry, uh, back towards the high school. It's not in this photo, but it's, um, just, just down the road on the same side of the street. Uh, this view is looking north again towards Lima Ferry. That's, that's a view of the existing sign on the site. And then this view is, um, sort of halfway up the, the parking lot, um, in front of the building, looking northwest back towards Lima Ferry Road. Then this view is, uh, looking southwest, um, from the, the property line towards Melville High School. And then, uh, staying put and just turning, looking southeast along that western property line. And then this view is just, uh, slightly, um, into the, the site. And you can see the western property line cut on the, the right edge of that photo. And then the existing structure, um, looking back towards the rear of the site. And here we're, we're at the rear of the site, um, at the edge of the parking lot. And you can see, uh, some of the, the trees, um, sort of in the buffer along the, the rear property line. And then this view would be looking along the rear of the building, um, also at the parking, parking lot, looking northeast. Uh, and this year, we're, we're looking northeast still. We've just moved, um, towards the end of the parking lot, um, up against the, the landscape buffer, um, to the prop, the rear property line. And this view is, uh, the existing trash enclosure, um, in the, this looking northeast, um, kind of in the southeast corner of the site. And then this view would be, um, at the edge of the, the parking lot in the rear, looking back northwest towards the existing building. And then, um, looking northwest, you can see the, the existing structure, um, as well as the, um, sort of northeastern property line, um, along the side there. And then this view is a little bit further north on the site, uh, looking the, the same direction. And if we turn and look southwest, um, back across the front of the existing building. And then this view would be standing back at Lima Ferry Road, looking southeast, um, towards the, the entrance to the, the existing building. And I believe the petitioner has a presentation at this time.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Petitioner?
So Keith, I've just made you the presenter, so you'll have to click share and then whatever application you have your presentation in. Coming up now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, my name's Keith Fryer. I'm with Clayton Engineering Company. And we, on behalf of Melville School District, are requesting an, a new ordinance to be written for this site. The previous ordinance that was written for the site is specifically for, uh, specific uses such as medical office, pharmacy, uh, I think there's a few other ones thrown in there. Uh, what the school district is looking to do is move their, uh, use from the high school campus for administrative offices to this location. And also to, uh, have a classroom component within this building that they can utilize for students. Uh, it's not going to be a lot of students, just a handful. Uh, and they're going to house their IT department within this building. Uh, this will give them kind of one central place to kind of hold their mainframe computer, uh, which will require some changes to the backside of the building. Uh, we're proposing a overhead door and also a separate entrance door on the backside. And also a generator for the mainframe computers. Uh, that, that's just a backup generator, won't be operating, you know, full capacity or anything. It's just a backup in case the power is out. Again, we are requesting a new ordinance to be written for the site. We initially proposed an amended ordinance, but because of the classroom component, we were, uh, under the guidance that, uh, new ordinance had to be written for this parcel. Uh, we do, I believe, have, uh, the architect and the school district on standby. Uh, if there's any specific questions about, uh, you know, internal use, they are proposing some, uh, uh, internal, internal renovations. Uh, I do not believe the exterior is going to change really much. Uh, the footprint of the building is not going to change. The small increase in the pervious area for the pad for the generator will be offset by losing four parking stalls. Uh, so we will meet all MSD's requirements in the future. Uh, feel free to open it up to any comments. Uh, that's really the main part of the presentation is to, uh, really just, uh, I'll go ahead and run this slideshow here. So this, again, we're different parts of the building, you know, locations of the building. As you see in the bottom photo, a little inset is where the generator pad will go, uh, or is proposed to go. It'll show up on the site plan on the next photo. Uh, it's really, you can see in the back area, back here at the, kind of the southwest corner of the building is where the generator pad will go. And there'll be a little bit of rework for the sidewalk because the overhead door, there's currently a raised sidewalk that's going to have to be reconfigured a little bit so that there's a little, there's no elevation difference so they can drive a pallet because there will be some paper deliveries and that sort of thing. That'll be housed inside the building. That's concludes the presentation. And like I said, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to, uh, answer any questions that you may have. Commissioners, any questions?
No.
I've got a couple. Um, what's the square footage of this building?
The total square footage, uh, that, that won't be changing. It's third, you know, like I said, that might can be adding to the building itself. Uh, let me look here. We're at about twenty-eight thousand eight hundred square feet.
Okay, uh, any changes on signage?
Uh, in the future, there will be a, a, a package submitted specifically for a site development plan review. Uh, what, the first up that we were told to go through were to just get the site ordinance written.
Okay. Administrative office, you're bringing up, are they bringing over what's in the current central location?
Correct. The building that's located at thirty-two hundred Lima, which is basically just a little bit east of the high school. There's a two-story building there that, uh, all the, uh, administrative office, uh, workers are going to be basically shifted to this location.
Yeah, I'm familiar with, with that building. Uh, any other administrators coming in from? There's a Jefferson Barracks location.
Uh, not that I'm aware of. They're still going to keep those buildings operational.
Uh, not that I'm aware of. They're still going to keep those buildings operational. This will just be whoever's housed in the thirty-two hundred Lee May Building. And, and what's the, uh, plans for that current building? Uh, that we are unsure of at the moment. I believe they would like to continue to possibly use that for future high school classrooms. Okay. Is there any, going to be any kind of cross? I guess you call it cross accesses between this building and the Melville Campus next door? Yeah, no connection at all. Just, it'll be a separate entrance. The, the entrances won't change as far as what's on the street currently. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Sure. Anyone else? Seeing none. Mel, you want to see if anyone would like to, uh, speak?
Sure. So if you would like to ask a question or make a comment about this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list or possibly in the bottom right-hand most corner of your WebEx screen. But at this time, I do not see anyone.
Okay, uh, that makes it rather simple for you. Uh, we don't need any rebuttal. Seeing none, that concludes this hearing. We'll let you off easy. Well, thank you. All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll go on to, uh, PC oh six dash twenty-two St. Louis County Planning Commission.
So the commission may recall adopting an, uh, a resolution of intent to consider changes to the zoning ordinance pertaining to fees, procedures, and general administration of the zoning ordinance. As indicated in that resolution, uh, this is the public hearing for that proposal. So just a little background about, um, fees. The fees were last updated in two thousand and four after there was a countywide comprehensive fee study. So that included all county departments, not just the Department of Planning. The intent was to bring fees paid into compliance with the actual cost of providing services. Um, that may have been the goal in two thousand and four, but the staff would say that is not reflected in today's fee structure. Um, this is important because rezoning and special procedures like site plan review are services that benefit property owners. It's not necessarily a service that, service that benefits the general public. Um, and for that reason, the burden of that cost should be borne by the developer. Um, and you see at the bottom of the screen, sort of a timeline of, of the fee structure amendments through this zoning ordinance's lifetime. So there were a set of fees that were included in the original zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-six. Then there was a sort of comprehensive update in nineteen eighty-two. And then, like I mentioned, the twenty oh four comprehensive fee study. And then the next would be what, what is revised based on this petition. So just to give some perspective, we've created this chart that shows the cost of staff time. So it ranges from your entry-level staff planner to maybe a, a mid-career planner who's gotten a promotion or has been with the county for a little while and makes a little bit, you know, has a little bit higher salary than your planning manager and your planning director. So you can see the first number is the salary and fringe benefits, which is then divided by the two thousand and eighty hours in a year, um, which comes out to, uh, hourly, uh, cost of staff time from about thirty-four dollars to up to about sixty-five dollars per hour for the director. So then if we take, uh, the entry-level staff planner and, and run that through one of our procedures. So i- in this example, we're talking about the site plan review procedure. Um, so that includes, you know, receiving a site plan, looking at it to make sure it falls into whatever, uh, zoning district. Um, maybe what was previously approved, going through the true proposal with the developer. This can take three to six hours of staff time just for that initial submittal. Um, we probably have never had site plans come through that are approved on their first submittal. So there's always, um, a revision required. Typically, there are at least three reviews and those reviews can take just as much time. So if we're looking at nine to eighteen hours of a staff planner's time, uh, it can take between three hundred to six hundred dollars of, of staff to, uh, initially review that site plan. Um, so for the site plan review, that's a one hundred dollar fee and that's only assessed once. Uh, no matter how long the reviews take and no matter how many, um, iterations of review there are. So here are, uh, here is the sign, or excuse me, the fee schedule. This was included in the public hearing notice and this lists fees from both the zoning ordinance as well as the subdivision ordinance. Um, and just for the commission's sake, this text amendment would only apply to the zoning ordinance. But the planning department is also taking this opportunity to look at some of the fees in the subdivision ordinance. But that would be the council's, uh, purview to amend that ordinance as opposed to the planning commission. So some of the main fees we assessed are the zoning application fees. So what you submit with your zoning application to get on a public hearing like tonight. So that includes a fee based on the acreage of the site and maybe another fee depending on a special procedure being requested. And what this pays for is reviewing that application per the requirements of the zoning ordinance, uh, to be placed on public hearing. There's also staff visits to the site, multiple staff visits that go with, um, getting a public hearing notice put together. I had mentioned the site plane review fee. This is a one-time fee, um, for any site plan. And that fee was actually only added in two thousand and four. There was no fee for site plane review prior to two thousand and four. Uh, we also have the Board of Zoning Adjustment, the other board that this department staffs, um, which has a singular fee, which pays for the review of the application notification of the, of the petition to neighbor, to neighbors. Um, and there's also a staff visit associated with, with, uh, with that work. And then, like I mentioned, we have several subdivision fees, which are based on the type of procedure you're requesting and, and the number of units at times. So other fees that aren't included in that chart are a, a little more recent, like the location verification fees we assess for medical marijuana facilities and self-storage facilities. Uh, these fees are newer, but the, the work involved in these tasks can also take more, you know, a couple hours. This, this specific assessment involves an ARC GIS map being generated to measure the distances between properties. So it is a little bit specialized. Um, then there are a couple fees that are in the zoning ordinance but are assessed and collected by the Department of Transportation and Public Works. This includes zoning verification and zoning compliance. So zoning verification is when you're just trying to make sure that your proposed use fits into the zoning designation at a site. That costs twenty-five dollars per parcel. Zoning compliance is when your use is already in place, but you need to prove to someone that that use in operation is in compliance with the zoning ordinance, and that's an eighty-five dollar fee. Additionally, the Department of Transportation does provide flood plan certification at twenty-five dollars per parcel. Um, and in speaking with the zoning enforcement officer, uh, who issues these zoning verification letters, um, they've definitely increased in, in frequency and complexity. Um, and, and that fee also doesn't really reflect the, the cost of staff time as well. So through this text amendment, new fees could be added to the zoning ordinance. The commission may notice that there, we do not assess a fee when a petitioner requests an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So, excuse me, to a governing ordinance. So the correspondence items we bring before you, while they can take, you know, they could take a whole day to write, you know, eight hours of staff time to analyze the request, to analyze the history of the petition, um, to work with the manager or the director on that request, um, but we assess no fee for that work. Additionally, we currently don't require a fee to, uh, have a pre-application meeting. So the manager and the directors, uh, they often meet with petitioners before they even submit. Um, and many jurisdictions do require a fee for that type of pre-application meeting, but we currently do not. So that's, uh, some background and a lot of background information about the fees themselves. Next, I'm going to go into a couple of the, uh, procedures of the zoning ordinance that we are also going to look at through this petition. Um, the first being the site plan review procedure section, section one zero zero three point one seven nine. So this, this section does have some, uh, archaic namings. For instance, like Debbie Solberg had mentioned earlier, it calls the Department of Transportation and Public Works, highways and traffic and public works separately. So there are some updates, um, needed in this section. Additionally, this section currently calls for a comment letter to go out within five calendar days of our interdepartmental site plan review meeting. And then for the applicant to resubmit within thirty calendar days. Um, these requirements are not being enforced currently, nor are they really possible to comply with, um, given workloads currently. Um, as I mentioned, adding the requirement for a pre-submittal meeting and then some stronger language regarding initial compliance review. This would be helpful because sometimes site plans come in that are, are missing several components. And so that first comment letter that goes out is really about, you know, provide me this, this, and this. Whereas if there was a stronger initial compliance review, some of that work could get, uh, cut off at the head. So then, uh, we have our special procedures in the zoning ordinance, which are the C eight and M three planned districts, but also the special procedures, the PEU, the conditional use permit. Um, that should say S B P, special business permit. The MXD, the Commercial Industrial Development District in the Landmark Preservation, um, overlay. So these, uh, these special procedure sections could also benefit from language that requires a pre-application meeting. Additionally, um, we would like to beef up some of the requirements for applications before they even get to the planning commission for public hearing. Currently, petitioners are not required to submit architectural elevations prior to public hearing. But we would really find that beneficial. I think the commission would too. Um, additionally, we could use some stronger language about requiring lighting and landscaping plans on separate sheets with your preliminary site development plan. And then perhaps clarifying the general, um, appeal procedure for all of those, the special procedures. Lastly, these, uh, section one thousand three point two hundred administration enforcement and permits. This section could use some clarification regarding, um, roles and duties of, of reviewing departments. Additionally, this is where a lot of the fees are actually housed in the zoning ordinance. So that is an overview of what the department will be, um, looking into as we prepare an information report on, on this topic. Um, and we will bring, you know, I think we will probably have some committee of the whole meetings possibly about this petition as well, if I recall correctly.
And this is the petition that Mr. Snead has indicated he has specific interest in, in working with staff before we bring the, the, the information report to the full commission.
Correct. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions about this information.
Questions, anyone? Seeing none, uh, you're off easy.
Ran out of breath almost.
Good job, good job.
Done well.
Appreciate it. Jacob, anything else?
I don't think there's anything else, uh, for this evening, um, and especially not for this petition. Uh, I think that we have, uh, there's a lot, um, I think of, of note and of interest is we want to, um, we want to create a process that, and, and sort of codify, put some, maybe some more guardrails and, and making sure that we, um, are able to bring to the commission more documentation, showing more landscaping and, and really being able to get petitioners to do some of this work, uh, before they bring it to the commission. So they have a, a more compelling story to tell and they're, and they're sort of able to, um, you know, more show how they're going to, um, comply with, uh, with, with the county's codes. Um, and I think it's really, um, I, I like the idea of also having those architectural elevations. Um, you know, at least giving us as-directed, some sort of as-directed ability to require those before coming, before coming to the planning commission, especially for new developments that we know, um, for certain that the commission's going to want to see, um, these kinds of things. And it could be really beneficial through the, the public hearing process to see it rather than to, to wait and see it at a, at your executive meetings. Um, so we want to get more information out of people earlier in the process, um, so that we can clarify, uh, information for, uh, for the commission as, as petitions move forward is one of the big goals of this, of this petition.
Okay, appreciate that. And with that, uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? And we're adjourned until the, uh, twenty-eighth, correct? Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Have a good one.
And happy Valentine, ladies.
Happy Valentine's Day.